I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Corleville City Council to order. It's November 12th, 2024. Could I have the roll call, please?
Kusmar Knudsen.
Here.
Volga Zhang.
Right here.
Nguyen.
Here.
Peterson.
Goodrich.
Here.
All council members except Councilmember Peterson are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city attorney, the city administrator, and several other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to amend our agenda.
Madam Mayor, we would like to amend the agenda by removing number seven and also revising the golf cart price in the memo, which is 27 even.
All right, moved by Goodrich. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Nguyen. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The amended agenda is approved. Okay, on to the next item. I have several proclamations to read this evening, and I will start with the proclamation for National Injury Prevention Day. Whereas unintended, unintentional injuries are the leading cause of death for Iowans ages one to forty-four, and the fifth leading cause of death for all ages. And whereas injuries and violence resulted in an annual average of 2,300 deaths, 14,500 hospitalizations, and 228,900 emergency department visits in Iowa, the number of injuries in Iowa is estimated to be higher due to the unknown number of individuals who received other medical care or no care at all. And whereas injuries can result in a high cost to Iowans with an average, with average charges up to $58,000 per hospitalization and $3,400 per emergency department visit annually. And whereas in Iowa, the three leading causes of unintentional injury deaths in 2023 were falls, motor vehicle crashes, and unintentional poisoning. And whereas injuries, whether intentional or unintentional, are preventable within the state of Iowa. University of Iowa Sted family Children's Hospital, University of Iowa Healthcare, the University of Iowa Injury Prevention Research Center, Iowa Department of Health and Human Services, and other partners across the state are committed to increasing public awareness and education around the prevention of injuries as we observe National Injury Prevention Day in Iowa and throughout the year. Now therefore, I, Megan Foster, Mayor of the City of Corleville, do hereby proclaim November 18th, 2024, to be National Injury Prevention Day. Signed on this 12th day of November, 2024, Megan Foster, Mayor. Okay, and do we have someone in the audience here to receive this proclamation? Please step up to the microphone and say a couple of words.
I'm Pam Hoogler-Werth with the University of Iowa Healthcare Sted Family Children's Hospital. I am the Director of our Pediatric Injury Prevention Program there, and I want to thank Mayor Foster and the rest of the Corleville City Council for this proclamation. As we, as she read for us, unintentional injuries are the leading cause of death and disability. We treat too many kids in our hospital that would not have had to be there at all if they would have maybe just chosen a little bit safer behavior. I think it's also important for the Corleville City Council to know that we partner with your new Chief of Police, Chief Nicholson, and do a lot of injury prevention program, especially with him leading Safety Village in our community. So we're very happy to accept this proclamation. I brought my superstar student intern with me, who's a senior undergrad student from Green Bay, Wisconsin, for any Packers in the house, and is going to pursue a graduate degree in the Physician Assistant Program. But Ella's been very helpful in helping us get state proclamations. Thanks so much.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Would you like to have a photo?
Sure, why not?
All right, let's take a photo. All right, thank you. Yes.
Maybe in your chest.
Saturday. Whereas the City of Corleville celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 34.7 million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for 61% of net new jobs created since 1995, and small businesses employ 45.9% of the employees in the private sector. And whereas 68 cents of every dollar spent at a small business in the United States stays in the local community, and every dollar spent, every dollar spent on a small business creates an additional 48 cents in local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas 59% of U.S. consumer, consumers aware of Small Business Saturday shopped or ate at a small independently owned retailer or restaurant on our, on Small Business Saturday in 2023. And whereas the City of Corleville supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas the City of Corleville welcomes and accepts people of diverse sexual orientations, gender identities, and gender expressions, and is proud to celebrate the contributions and cultures of these citizens. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Megan Foster, Mayor of the City of Corleville, Iowa, do hereby proclaim November 30th, 2024, to be Small Business Saturday, and urge residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday, celebrating its 15th year in 2024, and shop small throughout the year. Signed this 12th day of November, 2024, Megan Foster, Mayor. Now, do we have someone here to accept this proclamation? Not sure if we do. Okay, good enough. I will make sure that gets to the people that requested it. And I will move on to our next proclamation, which is for Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. Whereas Corleville faces an unprecedented number of households experiencing homelessness and hunger each day. And whereas this proclamation seeks to foster understanding and empathy for those affected by these critical issues, and to inspire action and advocacy on behalf of people with food insecurities and who lack a permanent home. Through collaboration, education, and advocacy, we can work towards sustainable solutions that address the root cause of food insecurity and homelessness. And whereas together, we can create a more compassionate society that prioritizes the well-being of all of its members, ensuring that no one is left behind in the struggle for basic human needs, realizing that food scarcity and housing stability are essential for a prosperous and healthy community. And whereas the realities of hunger and homelessness affect thousands of adults and children in our community every day, local food pantries have reported almost 19,000 visits and deliveries over the past fiscal year, along with nearly 34,000 nights of shelter provided for those experiencing homelessness. And on one of the coldest nights of the year, 24 of our neighbors slept outside due to not having a home. And whereas food insecurity and hunger stem from a lack of financial security and the high cost of living. And whereas homelessness persists due to a shortage of accessible, affordable, and right-sized housing, with and without supports. And whereas numerous organizations in Corleville are dedicated to supporting individuals experiencing poverty and homelessness. And whereas while we have made significant strides in addressing hunger and homelessness through collaborative community efforts, we must continue to develop resources that meet the needs of individuals with hope, dignity, and opportunity. Now therefore, I, Megan Foster, by virtue and authority vested in me as Mayor of Corleville, do hereby proclaim November 17th through, 17th through the 23rd, 2024, to be Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week in Corleville, Iowa, and urge all citizens to recognize the vital roles we each can play in making a difference in the lives of adults and children who experience hunger and homelessness in our community. Signed on this 12th day of November, Megan Foster, Mayor. All right, do we have anyone here to accept this proclamation tonight? Okay, we will make sure that gets to the appropriate people who requested that proclamation as well. And last but not least, we have a proclamation for National Apprenticeship Week. Whereas National Apprenticeship Week is designed to highlight the dedication and investment U.S. employers and labor management organizations have given to support registered apprenticeship. And whereas nowhere is this more evident than in the Joint Apprenticeship Training Centers that are funded and operated by Joint Labor Management Trust between building trades unions and their signatory contractors. And whereas the safest, most highly skilled, and productive construction craft workers receive their training through privately funded local joint apprenticeships and training committees, which offer nationally recognized, state-of-the-art curricula. And whereas the JATC apprenticeship training combines industry-standard technical instruction with structured-on-the-job learning. And whereas the building trades and their signatory contractors invest over $1 billion annually to apprentice and journey level training. And whereas nearly two-thirds of all registered apprentices in the United States are trained in the construction industry. Of those, 74% are trained in the Unionized Construction Center. And whereas the Building Trades multi-craft core curriculum is the largest pre-apprenticeship program in the U.S. construction industry. Currently, there are over 100 Building Trades apprenticeship readiness programs. And whereas the Building Trades founded Helmets to Hard Hats, a national nonprofit program that connects National Guard, Reserve, retired, and transitioning active-duty military service members with skilled training and quality career opportunities in construction. Now therefore, I, Megan Foster, Mayor of the City of Corleville, do hereby proclaim November 17th through the 23rd, 2024, as National Apprenticeship Week in the City of Corleville, and urge all businesses and community leaders to work with the Building Trades to support these critically important and successful training programs. Signed on this 12th day of November, 2024, Megan Foster, Mayor. Okay, now this was at the request of our colleague, Councilmember Royce Peterson. He is not with us this evening because he is traveling for his job. He actually works for the Carpenters Union, and he does a lot of work with this educational training program. So he is not here this evening. Is there anyone else that is here on behalf of the Building Trades to receive this proclamation? Is there anyone? Okay, I will make sure that Royce gets this to his colleagues. And I just want to say, I've done some events with him with this program, and it really is, it really is fantastic, and I'm happy to do this proclamation this evening. Okay, and that wraps that up. On to the next item. We have community comments. And this is a time for community members to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda, or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust both the overall comment time, as well as the individual speaking time, based on the number of speakers or any accommodations that a speaker might need. Do we have anyone here that would like to address us this evening about a particular topic? Okay then, good enough. We will move on to our next item, vicious animal hearing. So before we get into this, I want to say a few words, and then I'm going to have our city attorney say a few words as well. But I wanted to take a moment to just give some context for this agenda item, because this is something that's pretty rare, and it's something that we really don't see very often. And I want to make sure that the, the public understands the process that we are about to engage in. So we do have an ordinance in place in the City of Corleville that provides a procedure when there is an animal attack in the community. And the way this process works is that we have the parties involved meet with a panel. That includes the city administrator, the city attorney, and a representative from our law enforcement. And in this procedure, the parties present their sides, and the city attorney makes the ruling on what to do with the animal associated with the case based on the facts, as well as the rules of our ordinance. And in this particular case, after hearing from the parties involved and considering the parameters of our ordinance, our city administrator did rule that the dog in question should be put down. Now, the parties involved do have the ability to appeal the city administrator's decision to the city council, and that's what we're doing here this evening. We're going to hear from both sides, and we will determine whether or not to reverse or uphold the city administrator's decision. And Kevin, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just give you a brief outline here. There was a, there was alleged incident on October 4th of 2024, generally in the location of Western Hills Mobile Home Park. An animal owned by Brenna Prosser and Trevor Tweet got out of their residential property and went across the street and ended up injured, or ended up getting to a person who was walking down the street in the Mobile Home Park, and ended up killing the person's animal that she had with her, and then knocked the, the animal's owner to the ground before the dog went back to its residence. So what we're doing here tonight, since the, since the ordinance says that the three things the city administrator looks at, and this would be what you're looking to whether uphold or, whether or not the animal is vicious, whether or not the owner failed to restrain the animal reasonably, and whether or not it's in the public best interest to, to humanely destroy said animal. So since the ruling was in favor of, it was to put the animal, have the animal humanely euthanized, the owners did appeal. So the owners get to, the owners will go first, and then the other side will, the city representatives and the animal's owner, the other animal's owner, and one of the people who saw the incident will, will give you a, will testify or present what you're doing. So I'm, I'm going to ask everybody who's going to speak to go to the podium. There should be a notebook there. Please sign your name, or put your name there and your address before you speak, so that we have it for our records. So I guess at this point, if you want to open the hearing and...
Yep, I'll open this hearing. And I will say, let's give the folks that come to the microphone around five minutes or less, if you feel that you don't need all of that time. But just so we can keep things moving along, five minutes to, to share your, your, your testimony. So someone from the...
So Ms. Prosser, Mr. Tweet, you guys, your side, go ahead and go first, since you're the appealing party.
So I'm Trevor Tweet. I'm the owner of the, of the dog that got out. It was a fluke incident. She's a non-aggressive dog. We've never had a problem with her before. We understand that the way that everything panned out, it looks bad on paper. But the kids were going to let her outside. She just happened to bolt out the door. Again, we apologize for, for what has happened, and we feel bad about that. But we've owned the dog for eight years. We've never had a problem with her before. I don't know why she did what she did. If we do get the dog back, we've already figured out rehoming for her, so she won't be coming back to the trailer park. We plan on getting her back into training. My kids are asking every day about their dog. So to you guys, maybe it's just a dog, but to us, it's a family member. So, yeah, I'm not good with this stuff. There's a lot of people. So anyways, that's my five minutes.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Like Trevor said, we've never seen this behavior out of her before. I was not home. This is my daughter's best friend, who was home with her. Michaela is too emotional to speak tonight. I do have some pictures, if you guys want to see. It can test a Bo's temperament. We've had her for eight years. We have six kids, one adopted. She's been with us for our youngest daughter's entire life. Like Trevor said, they're asking about the dog. At this point, she has been in the shelter since the 4th, which is 47 days. I had to fight for her, because there's no one else to could speak on her behalf. In our home, we have a lot of kids in and out. We have six kids. Again, a lot of neighborhood kids are in and out. I never, ever would let a child in my house thinking my dog was vicious or had the ability to do something like this. And the only thing I can tell you is that, all I can think is that she thought that dog was a toy. In the context of what happened, Kai can tell you. Again, me and Trevor weren't home. We got home as soon as we got the phone calls. I'm a salon owner in North Liberty, so I was there. I had missed five phone calls from Michaela. She called my boss, who then had me rush home. And then by then, they had the dog in my bedroom, and the police had been on scene. Can I give you guys pictures?
Yeah, go ahead. I'll come take him and give him to the clerk.
I have six copies. I also have three statements written from friends. One is my old daycare provider, who used to bring my youngest Harley home from daycare, and was inside my house at all times with Harley and my dog. One is from a friend of mine who has cancer, who's been around Bo, and the other one is from a friend of mine who moved to Monticello. He had had his wife and kids around Bo as well.
I'm not sure totally what to say, but I was told to let Bo out, and I did. But Bo saw a lady and this really small dog across the street, and Bo ran after to go over there. But I don't think Bo can, like, totally understood that it was another living animal, because she picked it up so fast. I'm pretty sure Bo thought it was a toy. And then Bo, like, accidentally tripped the lady by running up too fast to her. So then she fell, and then Bo got a hold of the dog, and then unfortunately passed away. I have been at their house almost all my years of living. Never once did Bo ever harm another person, another animal. This is a freak accident. Like, this was something that was insane, that shouldn't have happened. But Bo is not vicious at all, in any sort of way. Yeah. There was a man, his name was Doug. He came out after the incident, like, two minutes while Bo was inside. He said that, he came out and said what happened, started screaming at me, and I told him the situation. And then he said he was going to bash my skull in. I was on the phone with the police when this happened. Brenna, Trevor, and the police all came. Situation got handled with him and whatnot. He came out two minutes after, though, so he didn't see anything that happened. But he's saying that Bo jumped on the lady. Bo tripped the lady, didn't jump. But yeah, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Did you have anybody else wanting to speak?
Iowa. I also wanted to let you know, I have arrangements to get her back in with Brandon full time. He wasn't able to make it tonight. He had a gun safety class tonight. And then one of my clients who lives rural, Solon, is willing to take her. And she will be caged at all times until we can relocate. So we are actively trying to find somewhere out of Corleville into county, so that we can have her back.
Ms. Prosser, could you tell them who Brendan was? I don't, could you tell them who Brendan is?
Brandon Fullcon.
Yeah, just say what he does.
He's Elite Dog Bag Training.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that...
He used to work for the Iowa City Police Department.
I'll make sure you sign your name.
I will, yeah. Yep. My name's Jenny. I've known Brenna for a few years now, and was her neighbor for approximately a year and a half. I work for the Clear Creek School District, and I transport her kids to and from school. I've been around Bo multiple times with my kid and girlfriend as well. Never, I have a fear of dogs myself, but never in my life have I ever felt a fear from Bo. I have sat on the floor of her home, just meeting this dog, and it has licked my face, played with me on the floor. Never felt fear from this at all. I've seen this dog interact with the multiple kids that come in and out of their home, that they take every day, in and out, just because they have hearts of gold that will do this for the kids out there. Never have I seen Bo growl, or jump, or feel any aggress towards a child, or even another person at this point. Like I said, I'm an animal lover too. Some scare the heck out of me, but I've never once felt a fear from Bo at all. That's it. That's all I have to say. But again...
Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay, have we heard from everyone that would like to speak?
So I think next we'll have the Corvo, representative of Corvo Police, just give a description of the day that...
When do, when do we ask questions?
You can ask questions if you'd like. Sorry.
Yeah, I'd like clarification on your plans for rehoming. I think it was a term you used. And an understanding if that's enforceable by the city or not. So you said something about rehoming, Solon, caging in the home, and until that was arranged. Can you expand on those plans?
So my client Ashton...
Yep, please go to the microphone.
Mike?
Just, we want to make sure that the, the folks, you're at home, can hear. Yeah.
My client Ashton Resner lives, I've, I've never actually been to her home. I haven't seen the property yet at this point. I knew they were putting up a cage that is attached to their garage, so she will have climate control. But they live rural. They don't live in the town of Solon.
So they're well, they're...
They know the context. They're small business owners as well. They're contractors. So they weren't able to make it here tonight. As far as I know, she was still trying to get here. I have a physical address. If you need her physical address, I can provide pictures, documentation of the setup. She will not be with any other animals, and this is again, until we can rehome. I'm willing to take any measures if that's muzzling her anytime we let her out, if and when we get her back. Like, she's an amazing family dog. Did that answer your question?
I think so. So you, you would plan to just visit her in Solon?
Yeah. I will go out there every single day. I will be, yeah, I'll be providing everything for her. Again, Brandon wasn't able to make it here tonight. So as soon as we set up her first day of training, I will be doing all the transporting her back and forth. Due to the safety of her, and threats already been made from neighbors, I will never bring her back to that trailer court. I can't have her out there. I'm scared someone will do something to her. She doesn't deserve that.
Answer your question?
Yeah, is that enforceable?
Well, right now, if you had an agreement like that, we'd, we'd have to have an, we'd have to enter an agreement with the property owner, or the dog owner, if that would be something. But that's kind of not what we're looking at right now. But it could be done if that's what...
It could be done.
Yes. Yes.
Um, I had...
With the new proposed dog owner, you mean?
Well, we'd have to, we'd have to, they couldn't bring the animal back within the corporate limits and stuff like that.
I had been in contact with a lawyer, who is also, who helped me draw up the appeal paperwork. Um, I had waited a few weeks to get documentation of, I had heard that there were two rumored incidences on Bo. So I was waiting for documentation from, um, Kevin. And it took a little longer, um, but my lawyer was going to call Kevin and try to give some type of plea to get Bo released, knowing that she wouldn't go back to the court, or back to our current residence.
Okay.
Can you, uh, clarify? You, you just said something about, uh, in, other incidents. Can you explain that?
Um, so I had heard that there were two incidents on Bo. And when I had asked Kevin for information on that, um, the very last documentation was a bite record from September fifteenth, twenty twenty. Um, Bo had gotten out, and another dog went after her. I reached to grab her with this hand, and that dog bit me.
You said there were two, or did you say there was just the one? I'm sorry.
There was that one incident and this one.
And this one, I see, okay.
Yeah, so like, she had gotten out, she had approached another dog, and that dog had gone after her. And again, when I went to grab her, its mouth went in. I have pictures. I didn't print those off. No, not Bo. Bo didn't bite me, it was the other dog.
So talk to me about the training. How long has this dog been in training? And, and can you explain the, was there, uh, uh, just, just talk to me a little bit about the training, and what, what was, was the goal of the training? And, and how much training has the dog received, uh, up to this point?
Um, I put Bo in training. Brandon had her for eight days initially to test her temperament with other dogs and around other people. And that was after she had gotten out. I was having trouble with her bolting out the front door. So that was a habit we needed to break, and then just simple obedience. So I followed up with him for twelve weeks after that. He took her twice a week, really all day. 'Cause I would drop her off before I went to the salon in the morning and pick her up at night. And he, he sent me multiple pictures of her with other dogs, all sizes. From rottweilers to shih-tzus, to labs, to mastiffs.
The bolting behavior. Can you describe the prior bolting behavior?
Um, it was more when someone would come through the door that she didn't know. She was happy to see them and would go out the front door.
How many times did that happen?
Um, we ended up fencing in our yard, at our old property, but it was a handful of times.
A hand, do you have, do you have a more specific number?
Like, five, five or six.
Five or six, okay.
But there was only the one encounter where she encountered another dog. Um, yeah, and she wasn't the aggressor in that situation.
Okay. Anybody else have questions? Okay. Alright, thank you. Thank you very much, so.
Um, I think next we'll have the Corvo Police Officer Representatives, who, uh, came to the, uh, on October fourth, to came to investigate that. And then we'll have the, uh, Ms. Garrett and Mr. Ruby, uh, say something after that.
Okay.
So, Ms. Delwiler, you wanna go first, or, since you were the first one there?
Chris doesn't wanna go, I'll go first.
She still has to go eventually.
You need my name written now? No, okay. Officer Delwiler, worked for Corvo PD. So on this date, we originally, we were dispatched, there were two calls. One call was for an animal essentially at large, loose, potentially, you know, having an altercation with another person. There weren't very many details, but shortly after that, six, seven minutes later, there was another call, separate caller. Calls in and says there's a female on the ground who's hurt, and there's a deceased dog. So just based off lot numbers, you put two and two together, it's the same incident in two different colors. I was the first unit on scene, and I saw, um, a female laying in the middle of the street. And as I get closer, I can see a small dog, you know, it's, it's not moving, it's clearly deceased, tongue's hanging out. I could see visible injuries to the female, so that was my obvious first. First thing I zoned in on is, are you okay? Checking out her head, 'cause there was blood on her forehead. Um, complaints of shoulder pains, just making sure that she's stable. Um, got paramedics, they were already coming by dispatch, tell them what's going on. Once I understand that, you know, nothing's life-threatening with her injuries, uh, she's able to say that she was out walking her dog. An animal came out of another unit or another trailer somewhere, and she was able to pick up her dog and hold on to it, but the force of this, this attacking dog knocked her over. That's how she injured her shoulder, and she couldn't hold on to her dog anymore. So the attacking dog essentially grasped it with its mouth and then led to it being deceased. And at that time, um, the attacking dog was nowhere to be seen. I didn't see it. Um, there weren't any other people around except for the second caller. There was a gentleman that, that told us about the, uh, the medical side of it. Um, and once the ambulance service came, I made contact with Trevor and Brenna, 'cause they were not home at the time, but they had parked down the street, and they were walking up. Just kinda gathered information about who they are, why they were walking up, finding out that they were the owners of the attacking dog. Dog was secure in their trailer, and that one of their kids was at home watching the dog at the time. And soon after that, our Animal Control Officer showed up and just assisted her with the rest of the investigation. Any questions?
Kid, um, the, can you talk a little bit about the, uh, just the, the nature of the injuries that were sustained? Or that your assessment of the nature of the injuries that were sustained by both the human and the, the dog?
Yeah, so, um, with the female who fell, I could, she was holding on to her left shoulder. And it seemed, I mean, at that time, it was very tender. Um, there was nothing puncturing, no wounds or anything. She had a slight abrasion to her forehead area. That's where the blood was coming from, but that stopped bleeding at this point. She was able to talk, she was conscious, um, able to explain things, like she knew where she was at. She could recollect, you know, events of what led her to the ground. So there weren't major concerns till paramedics came.
Okay, so no head injury or anything that, other than the abrasion?
Yeah, nothing I could diagnose.
No concussion, or, okay.
Right, yep.
Gotcha.
Exactly. So that's what I observed, um, on the female. And as far as the dog, I didn't get a good look, um, at the dog. Other, its, its tongue was hanging out of its mouth. There wasn't any breathing I could see. Um, our Animal Control Officer did a better diagnosis or assessment of, of the injuries.
Yeah, what I, what I'm curious about is if the, the dog die, or was it immediate? Or was it after the fact that the dog died from the injuries? Or was it an immediate situation, or was there, I don't know if I'm making sense, but...
Yeah, I mean, when I got there, it was deceased.
Okay.
So I didn't, I didn't see the process or how long it was hanging on for.
Okay, gotcha. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
So you wanna go next, please?
I'm Chris Whitmore. I'm the Animal Control Officer for Corvo. Uh, I arrived at the scene right after I, like he stated, uh, the little dog was in the street, covered up. Um, the lady had already been taken away by ambulance. Uh, I proceeded to talk to Brenna, uh, find out that it was her dog, that, uh, one of her children was trying to let the dog out on a tether. It pushed past them and went after her and her little dog. Um, the dog did have a little crushing of its chest. Um, and it didn't die immediately, but eventually the, the kids were able to get the dog away from Bo. Um, and I did take it to a vet, um, at Animal Clinic, Dr. Zhang, and she did a preliminary exam and said the dog just died of crushed, uh, ribs and internal bleeding. Um, and it probably wouldn't be an instant death, but it would've been, it would've taken a little bit for it to die. Um, and I impounded Bo, uh, because of the incident that happened, the dog being at large and, um, allegedly killing this dog. Um, and then, uh, the dog, like I said, has been at the shelter since that time on the fourth. Um, one thing I will say is, I, I know that they love this dog. Um, the dog probably loves their kids, probably loves every person in that, uh, trailer park. This is a dog versus dog that is my concern. Um, is this dog gonna attack another little dog or something bigger? Um, putting it to another environment isn't what, uh, I don't want anything to die. I'm not in this line of work to make something to be euthanized, but I don't wanna see that again. I don't wanna see a lady get knocked down, have her precious little dog that I think was over ten years old just doing its thing, got walking, and, uh, it was attacked and killed. So, that's why we're here. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Ms. Garnett, do you wanna go ahead and go?
My name is Jean Garnet, Garnett. Um, on October, October first, a little bit after one o'clock, um, I was going to go shopping, and I took my little five and a half pound dog that we also loved and who was a member of our family. And she likes to walk up by Doug's house, which is across the street from, the dog that killed her. And norm, I've walked her up there hundreds of times, and we've lived there. We've, we've had her about nine years. We've, I've lived there forever, it seems. But when it, their dog wasn't out that much, but when it was, it was always tethered. It was always tethered. If it did see us walking, it would bark aggressively. Um, I don't know why it never occurred to me that it could get out. Normally, it wasn't there, it wasn't out if their cars weren't there, but it happened to be that, uh, their daughter was home and, uh, her friend. Uh, but there were no cars there, so, um, I was walking on the other side of the street from their place. Uh, she just stopped at Doug's and sniffed around her diamond. He's got a dog Diamond, and she's friends with. And, um, I heard a squeak of the door open, and I heard a bark, a single bark. Not a bark, 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 like what he'd do when, or she would do when she was tethered, but a single bark. And I s- saw her literally hurleding toward us, and I grabbed up my little dog. Which, I don't know of anybody who would not have picked up their little dog, seeing such a thing. And I clasped her close to my chest with both arms around her. The dog did not trip me. The dog, um, I don't, I don't wanna use the word pounced, but the dog on his hind legs, um, used both of its paws to, just intentionally trying to knock me down. I knew that was what he was trying to do. He, and their dog weighs ninety pounds or so, I would guess. Maybe ninety to a hundred. Um, his legs are fairly short, so he couldn't get up to my chest. But he kept just jumping at me and pushing at me with his. Well, naturally, I'm holding the dogs in my arms. I'm almost eighty years old. I'm on uneven ground, 'cause I'd gotten up in the yard to, and I resent the fact that this is portrayed, number one, that he didn't push me down. He, I just tripped. He accidentally tripped me. He pushed, I was clear up into the yard, the neighbor's yard, and I ended up in the middle of the street because I was wildly trying to catch my balance. And he was, followed me the whole way, you know, and he knocked me down. Well, he knocked me, and then I probably ended up in the middle of the street because I was trying to catch my balance. I, I hung on to my dog, even when I fell. I fell over sideways, if you can imagine yourself falling over sid- sideways onto the cement street. So it was quite a blow to my shoulder and my hip. My head didn't get hurt that bad. Um, but as soon as I fell, it knocked my arms loose, and he instantly grabbed her. He didn't grab her initially where he later grabbed her. He, I was lying there watching him do this. He initially grabbed her around the ribs, and I could see he had punctured her stomach. And then he re, regrabbed her around the neck. And he just clamped down, and he laid down, and he just clamped down on her. The kids tried to get him off of her, and he would not let go. When he had first come at me, I was yelling him, "Down, down." But he had no intention of getting down. Doug did see a lot of it, 'cause he saw through his, he heard me yelling and saw through his window what was happening. He had been about to take his own dog out, but anyway, he started running toward the door to come out, and he fell over his own dog, so he, it was not two minutes, he was there within, less than a minute. The dog that, um, had my dog wouldn't release from them trying to get it. They were pulling on his neck, on his collar, and he wouldn't release. He finally let go because she died. She was dead. I watched her, we, take her last breath. She's, blood, she choked up some blood. And the last thing movement I saw of her, Doug was there by then, and, and he said, "Lilu." And I saw her little ear flick up. And then she didn't, and she, she just didn't do anything, I just, she's... And he felt her to see if she was breathing, and she was not breathing. The dog, I resent them trying to put this off on two. I feel almost like they're trying to blame me for picking up my dog because his, their dog was coming at me. Their dog didn't growl at me. Their dog didn't bite me. All he wanted to do was knock me down, so he could get at my dog. I don't know of anybody who would think that the whole issue was about, oh, he wanted to play with tug of war. That offends me deeply. I was, I've been dealing with this for, what? Over a month now. And I, I understand that it was an accident. I understand they love their dog, but they... It's taken us this long to get over. Where I'm not crying. And I did get hurt. I went to the hospital. My, by the time I went, the hematoma was forming on my hip, which I still have. It's going down, but I still have it. They did a bunch of x-rays and everything. They didn't see anything broken or torn. I've had some therapy with my hip. It kept feeling like it was going to go out from underneath me when I turned. And that's going well. I don't think, I don't think I'll have any long-term medical problems, but I will have medical bills. And no one's offered anything. There's been no offer of helping with that. I understand things happen and mistakes are made. And I, I don't really want to take vengeance on the dog. Because I realize the dogs doing, even, even the trainer that he was last time said, they are dogs of prey. And I know that pit bulls and mixes of pit bulls, it's inbred in them to fight with dogs. And you can't deny that. All you have to look is the history. I just know one thing, I feel like the circumstances were, if there were occasion arose where it was loose again and someone had a dog, I feel sure he would do the same thing. Whether that would be taken care of by this new home, I don't know. I'm just saying it's been a really hard thing to go through. And for a long time, I had flashbacks, it all happened because it was so close. My face is here. He's there crushing my dog's neck. And I think that's sufficient.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? I do have one question. Is the, is the yard fenced? Is there a tether and a fence in the yard or just? Okay, 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 I got you. Okay. Okay, we're not gonna do this. I just want to know. Okay, I just want to know if there is a fence or in your, if your yard is fenced in addition to there being the tether.
Mr. Ruby, you want to see which, testify to what you saw on that date? Thank you.
Okay, when this happened, I was in my house and I thought it was kids getting out of school because I heard screaming. It was Jean screaming. And I didn't, I thought, you know, when kids got out of school, they make a lot of noise and stuff, they're coming up the street in groups, you know. So I looked out my front picture window, which contrary to previous testimony, I can see everything about Trevor and Brianna's house across my front window because I have a window that's five feet wide by eight feet. So I can see everything. And I was looking out my window because I heard screaming and I watched Bo pummeling her and knocking her to the ground on the concrete and her head was cut from the, hitting her, hitting her head in the ground, she's bleeding. And I tried to get my aluminum baseball bat and run outside to smack that damn dog. And I tripped over my own dog and dropped it. And so I just left the bat and ran outside to see if Jean was okay because by that time, the daughter had come out and it took her a long time to get the dog to drop the other dog, but had gotten him to drop the dog in the concrete. And watching this, I'm sixty-five years old. Just listening to this again was very hard. That dog was my little buddy. My dog Diamond and her were best friends, best friends. And we, this little tiny dog was the sweetest little thing you ever saw. And, and I have no Bo too. I've petted Bo, I've been practically in their house around that dog and he's never attacked me or done anything to me. But he's always, I've always been scared that my dog would get loose and go over there. Just was, because terriers are the kind of dogs that start scraps. But my dog is the kind of dog that if she got in a scrap, I could tell her to knock it off if she knocked it off. I saw a side of Bo that day that I never saw before, being their neighbor directly across the street from them. And it scared the hell out of me. Because he pummeled her until she fell. And then he grabbed that dog up in his mouth and bit it in half. I mean, that dog, when I got to the dog, I petted her a couple of times and said her name and she raised her ears and took three breaths and passed. She had holes in her on both sides of her body. And yes, I yelled across the street at this gentleman because he told me to shut my mouth. I was having a freaking heart attack.
We just go to the, just testify what we're, there's no burying on this.
I didn't sleep for two days after this. I was so shook up. It bothered me badly. The last thing I want to see is this dog in my neighborhood again. That's all. That's it. And it's a day I won't forget for a long time. When I was third grade, I watched a city truck in Fairfield run over another dog and I never forgot that. This was very traumatizing. My dog and me, we would have been out in that same spot where she was had I not got a phone call about the Johnson County Attorney because I do some legal stuff. I would have normally been out in the yard then at that same time in that same place. So it could have happened to me. But this little dog was harmless. And this idea about it, thinking it was a toy, she wanted to kill that dog and she killed it quick. It didn't take that long, so incident was over in probably five minutes. And that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And can we shut the door?
Pardon me? I'll get it.
I just, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Garnett. Okay, thank you.
Okay, my name is Ken Garnett, I'm her husband. Obviously, I didn't see the incident, but I saw a lot of results of it. A couple of things that need to be brought out. Their dog was not on a leash. They chained their dog up outside and leave it, which is against Western Hills' own policy. Several dogs, including pit bulls, are not allowed in the park according to Western Hills' own regulations. And it's been that way for the ten years that I've lived there and probably longer than that. How they get around it, I don't know. But the fact is, my dog is still dead. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all right. I think we've heard from everyone and I want to thank everybody that came and spoke. And I just do want to take a minute to acknowledge just how hard this situation is from all angles. And I totally understand how much pets mean to people. I think the comment was made that pets are like family and I absolutely, I know that because I have pets of my own. So I just want to acknowledge that all the way around, this is a really difficult and painful and tragic situation. And it's, I just wanted to acknowledge that. And, and I know that there are a lot of people that, you know, in the room tonight that are grieving and have just, it's just really, really hard. And I, and I'm very, very sorry that the whole situation happened. It's definitely not something that, that anybody would wish upon anybody. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. I think I'll start our discussion by asking Kevin, can you talk a little bit about the details of our ordinance, what it states? And, and maybe talk a little bit about, you know, the, what, and maybe Kelly, you can chime in too. Just what, how, what, how did you come to this decision? And talk a little bit about the parts of our ordinance that...
Yeah, I can talk about the ordinance again, just to remind you what City Minister Hayworth had to do. The, the hearing is whether or not the animal is vicious. By definition, an animal attacking another animal makes it vicious by... The second thing is whether or not the owner failed to restrain said animal reasonably. Obviously, the animal got out of the house. Got out of the house and was not on a leash. So, it really comes down to the third, third item here, whether or not it is in the public best interest to humanely destroy the animal. So, in, in the past, we have done, you know, I think that's what the, I don't, I can't speak to what Kelly, Kelly thought about when he made the ruling on this, on this section. So I don't know if you want to just talk briefly about that?
Yeah, I think the issue that came down in my mind was twofold. Number one, that another animal was killed in the process of this whole incident. And a human was also severely injured. And those were the two things that, you know, settled it in my mind.
So these are the things that are in our ordinance?
Yeah, these three things I...
I want to make that clear, that how the ordinance reads. Because that's, that was the basis for the ruling.
The ruling that's in front of you.
Yes.
So, that's, that's the basis for the ruling. That's what the, the hearing is supposed to determine, those three items.
And the, the other, I, I, I'm just curious if you know off the top of your head the, the comments about what Western Hills' policy is? Do you know if that's accurate?
I, I don't, I don't have any reason to believe that that's what Mr. Garnett said was not, was not true. Really has nothing to do with us because we didn't have a breed ban in Corvilles. So, anybody can have that type of breed of animal in Corvilles. So, it would be a, it would be a private matter between Western Hills and the residents there.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yep.
Thank you. All right. Let's have a discussion. What are thoughts? What thoughts do you have on this? And just to be clear, I am not, I don't vote on this matter. I am just running this process. It'll be the, the council that ultimately makes this decision. So, what are, I'd like to hear just some of the things that are going through your mind. What are some things that, questions you have or, or just other thoughts or discussion?
Question for Kevin. There is a leash law, leash ordinance in this, in Corvilles, is that correct?
Correct.
Just for clarification.
Yes.
I've, I've read and reread the ordinance and I appreciate everybody's input. I don't, the emotion has to cut both ways, I can appreciate that. Seeing one animal unprovoked killing another animal does not set well with me, to be real honest. And I'm just going to come out and say, I'm gonna, I would be in favor of upholding Kelly's decision on this hearing.
I've...
I mean, there's, the, the three points that Kevin pointed out all apply in this, in this circumstance.
Lori, you were gonna...
Well, yeah, I too just extend my sympathy and condolences to all of you. I can't imagine how difficult this has been. I do know from my own life experiences that animals are animals and sometimes they behave differently than you ever expect. And after that happens, we need to be responsible. And I would agree with upholding the decision.
And, and the other, the other element that's even, excuse me, is probably even more important is the fact that, that, Ms. Garnett, an actual, a, a, a human being was also injured, which in my mind is even more important. It supersedes the, the welfare of an animal.
Mike, do you have any thoughts?
Very many. Yeah, very sad, sad incident for everybody. Is it in the public's best interest is what I'm public, or debating a little bit. And it's why I think it's clearly in the best interest to never have that dog be in Western Hills. I can't imagine how traumatic that would be for people there. Is it in our best interest to have the, the dog put down or not? And they have a plan for that. I recall as a kid, some dogs in town, you know, got a little vicious and, you know, they, they sent them out to some farm, a farmer who, who took care of, who took care of them and they were less of a threat. So I'm a little sympathetic to that plan. But I don't know about the enforceability of it.
The, the facts of the matter though are what we've heard and apply to this ordinance. And the plan that they put forward is just a plan at this point.
Can you talk a little bit about, I know we addressed that a little bit, but can you just kind of circle back to the point that Mike is making? I know we, we did, this was right, you did ask that question earlier, but...
Once the animal leaves the town, we do, we really don't have jurisdiction over the animal. Obviously, if they, if they brought the animal back into town, then we'd have jurisdiction over it. But it's, it's, you can write an agreement whether it has any teeth when the dog is not in, in the city limits of Corvilles. I, you know, it's hard for me to, I do have some city ordinances that are written that you can't, that's one of the options you can have. But we don't really have that in our ordinance. I mean, so I, I don't, I'm not a big, you can write the agreement and say the animal's going to be taken, taken out of town. But if, if something happens to the animal, you know, other, if we, we'd have to catch the animal back in town to, to, you know, and we're not going to go around looking to see if the animal's back at the, back at the, back at the home that it was, came from, so.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
So, so I mean, I mean, we can write an agreement that says that. Now, how effective that is, that's another story.
Is that kicking the can down the road?
I, I mean, you, it's, it's the council's decision for, for whether that, you know, whether you believe that or not. I don't want to influence your decision one way or the other.
But we can't make a decision tonight contingent upon an agreement. It would be like a gentleman's handshake that...
Yeah, well, the animal would have to stay in the, you know, shelter even longer. And at some point, it's not good for the animal to be in the shelter for that long either, so. We don't have any agreement in place right now.
Hi, what are you thinking?
As a mom and as someone who have pets all my life, I cannot begin to understand the loss on both side. And I am sympathetic with the pain that both side are feeling right now. It's not a situation that anyone want to be in. And this probably is going to be one of the hardest decision, you know, that I make representing the people of Corvilles. When we are put on that, the seat, we swear to uphold and make decision that is best for most of the resident that live in Corvilles. And that has been my guiding principle with every decision that I make. I don't make it lightly. There is no win outcome in this at all. Whether we find an alternative home for Bo or put Bo down. Whether we find an alternate home for Bo or put Bo down. To be honest, I don't want to be the person that make the decision. I don't. But I don't have a choice.
Well, let's let, I think Hi is still processing.
I also don't want the dog to be in the shelter any longer. If I may, I would like to hear what Mrs. Garnett would like to do if the situation would reverse. But I don't think we can have that.
Was that?
Right. We can't. I know.
Yeah.
I know. Yep.
We're kind of-
I'm just working through my thought process.
Yep, I understand.
Go for it. Do what you need to do.
I do want to know that if the decision come down to finding an alternate home for Bo, and that the owner upheld that decision, then that is beyond what we can do, correct? Since the animal will be out of the Corvilles.
I mean, here's, yeah, here's the, I mean, it can be done, but whether, you know, like I said, the animal goes out and we said, okay, the animal's always got to be muzzled, or the owner's got to be in there, how do we know that's going to be, you know, how are we going to know that's going to be enforced?
I guess what I'm asking is that if the animal was to be removed elsewhere, it would not be in Corvilles anymore, right? It would not be, so it would, it, well, in some way, it becomes someone else's problem.
Are we ready for a motion?
Ready for motion?
Are you ready? Okay. All right. So, I would entertain a motion to uphold the city administrator's ruling. Get a motion?
I will, I'll make the motion to uphold the city administrator's ruling, as written.
Okay. Could I get a second on that motion? Seconded by Goodrich. Do we do a roll call vote?
Yes.
Okay. Could I have the roll call?
Knutson?
Nay.
Volzang?
Aye.
Quinn?
Nay.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Okay. So, we have a tie?
Mm-hmm.
So, does it fall to me now?
No.
It does not? Okay.
Let me just make sure, let me make sure, though, before I do that. One second. This is a simple motion, not a resolution. That's all different stuff. No, because you have to have a, you have to have a majority of the, you have to have a majority of the people here, so.
Okay. So, it, the, it is reversed? Is that correct?
Yeah, does, you're up, so, do you, I, I take, you want the, you want the, do you two voted no, want the thing reversed, or what do you want? So, reversal means the animal's just released to the, released to the owners?
I understand that.
Okay. Is that what you're, that's what we're intending? It doesn't mean I got an agreement or anything like that?
I am trusting that they'll proceed as they've said tonight, which I hope I'm not wrong about that.
Well, I, I would have some concerns. I would have some concerns.
Definitely concern, especially when, when we have an elderly lady who's involved. That's, to me, a more important element than dog versus dog. Who's the next lady or, or man, or child? God forbid a child. What happens if, for ten-year-old granddaughter would have been walking the dog?
Not, there's no talking.
I do not want to see that.
No, we're, I understand that this is a very emotional situation, but we need to, we need to, to figure this out. So, Kevin, talk to me about what, what the next steps are, what we do.
Well, if you reverse the, if you reverse the city administrator's decision, that means the dog is going to go, be released from the shelter. There is no, there's no agreement in place. You're trusting that this is going to happen.
Take this to an extreme example. We got a, a, a man who commits a crime against another man. What's the judicial process there? Do we just cut him loose? If, if one ma, if a man kills another man, there's judicial process involved. You don't, you don't just turn him loose to, to his parents.
I want to know-
I see, I see a parallel here.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I didn't mean to interrupt you. What I want to know is, since we have, we don't have a majority, so what does, I just need to know what the next steps are. What, what do we do? How do we proceed with this? Because we don't have a majority, we've got a tie, so there's not a clear majority one way or another.
Right.
I feel like I need to say one more thing, that I, I think there's a, a strong standing that once an animal experiences the blood of another animal, experiences this kind of thing, the killing, that they can't be trusted after that. And I've had many experiences in my, you know, farm life, whatever, where animals have had to be put down because they have done similar to this, taken after another That's what I'm going on.
So, yeah, I, I just need to know what the next steps are.
Well, if you want the, if you want me to work on an agreement with them, we would probably keep the animal in the, is that what you?
I just want to know, I mean, what happens next from our standpoint? We have a tie. We don't have a majority.
Correct.
So, do we, do we continue discussing? Do we, because we don't have a resolution.
Right.
There's no resolution right now.
No.
Does that default back to the original decision?
Well, you, you, you made a motion to uphold the, uphold the, you made a motion to uphold the, uphold the ruling, and it didn't-
So, if we made a motion to reverse the ruling and it's tied two-two, that's different?
Well, that wouldn't, that wouldn't pass either. So, I mean, you could hold this open and wait till, you know, to the next, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I'm not in favor of dragging this out any longer than we have to, and I would like to have a resolution to this situation this evening. This has gone on too long, it sounds like. And I, I just, I, I will say this, I don't have a vote. I've got deep concerns about having, I, I get it. I get that this is awful. I get how painful it is. I have had an incident in my own personal life where my daughter was attacked by a dog that was also friendly and would never hurt a fly. And so, I, I know how painful this is from all fronts. And I guess I would say that I would have some serious concerns about our ability to manage the agreement. There's no, there's not a real way to manage it, and I would have concerns about it happening again. I mean, you know, so, I know it's hard, but those are the, those are the concerns that I have. And I guess I'm not entirely comfortable, and again, I don't have a vote, but I will say I'm not entirely comfortable just releasing the dog back out into the community, you know? I mean, that's, I, it's all well and good, we can have a plan until that plan fails. And if it failed once, there's a strong chance it will again. So, I, I will say that, that I know I don't have a vote, but I do have some concerns about, about that. So, I, I just need to know, is this it? We just turn the dog back out or into the trailer park, or, or what?
So, if that's, can we have another vote?
Only if the, only if the people who were voted against it would bring it back up.
So, they would have, somebody would have to make a motion.
Okay.
It couldn't be Rich or Lori, because they were voted in favor of it.
Because we were, okay. Yeah. Thank you.
The, the idea of, of having a quote-unquote "plan" to move the dog to another, another location, another area, right now, this is our problem. This is our problem that happened in our city. If we don't deal with the problem, we're just kicking it down the road and moving, giving the problem to somebody else to deal with. I'm not in favor of that.
We have a responsibility.
I'm sorry?
We have a responsibility.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. I think, I think the oath that I took was to uphold the ordinance and the laws of the city of Corvilles, and that's what we're dealing with.
Yeah.
I don't think that there was anything in-
That's a little harsh, Rich. I mean-
What's that?
We all took the same oath.
I know that.
It's, 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 it's in the best interest of the public to-
Yeah, and I don't think anybody's-
And we disagree on that.
Yeah.
I, I, you know, I'm not an advocate of the death penalty. I know this isn't equivalent, but, you know, this is a dog that, from everything I've heard, including the neighbor, you know, this is, had never shown vicious behavior before. We didn't unfortunately get to hear from the trainer, you know, and what they've seen and done, what can be done.
And, and I, I guess I just feel that, you know, training is great, I mean, all of the, I just have real concerns that there's, you know, we would have no way of protecting the, the people and the animals in the, in the community, you know? It's, there would be no agreement, or, I mean, we would, it would be really, really difficult to enforce that, you know? It would be really difficult to enforce that, is, is my concern. And I guess I just, I, I agree that this sounds like it was an extremely traumatic situation in terms of the way the dog was, was attacking the, and, and the dog, just from what I've heard, it does sound like the dog had intent to, to get the, the smaller dog. And that concerns me. That, that does concern me a, a great deal. And, and I know I've, I've had situations where I've, I've heard, and, and it very well may be true, that the dog is gentle and doesn't go after people that they're familiar with. I, I understand that, I really truly do, and I know how, how hard that is. But I, I would have, like I said, I don't have a vote, but I have some significant concerns about what it would mean to draw up an agreement or come up with, I mean, the enforcement of that would be difficult, and there is, you know, we heard our animal control officer, I'm sorry, we are not taking questions from the public at this time, we did hear our animal control officer make the statement that there were concerns that this is something that could happen again. So, that's, that's where I'm sitting with, with this. And I, I, I probably should have spoken up, I, I didn't, I wanted to just try to leave the decision, you know, not, try not to influence too much, because I know that this is hard. But I, I, I will add my two cents, and-
So, I think where we sit now is unless one of the two that voted against it want to bring it back up, we should just move on.
Let me say one more thing. It's, one of the elements is, is that whether or not it's in the public's best interest. In my opinion, animals don't constitute public. It's the humans that constitute the public, in my opinion. And we're not talking about, we're talking dog versus dog. Well, that's, okay, I get that. But Mrs. Garnett was, was injured and could have been injured a lot worse than what she wore, okay? And you've got ongoing medical issues, is that correct? So, that's what, what you've indicated. So, yeah, I mean, there's a, there's a, the human element, to me, is much more important than, than dog versus dog, or cat versus cat, or kangaroo versus kangaroo. I don't care. It's the, it's the people element that's much more important to me. And in my opinion, that's how I would, I, I would define what is in the public's best interest. It's humans, not animals.
So, I will just pose the question, do either of the folks who voted no, would you be interested in bringing, making an addition, a second motion? Mike, you said yes or no? You're going to have to.
I guess that means no.
Okay. What about you, Hi?
Hey.
Stop.
You don't get to say that.
No, 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 no. Hi, what do you think?
all the kids, all the people who love their animal, what what people trusted us to do when we sit here. What should we do? The difficulty of enforcing certain agreement, the lack of staff capacity to carry out those agreements. There's just a multitude of thing that play into this situation. But we have to think of what is best for the majority of people in Corvilles. And I do agree with Council Goodrich that, you know, sometime, yes, animal is family when they live with us. But sometime they are that animal. They, they can't reason, sometime they can't tell the difference, like human being. For me personally, I would be in favor of reversing, but as a counselor, thinking of my larger Corvilles, I have to do what best- I have to do what best for the majority. So, I would like to bring that back to the table.
Okay, Kevin, what do we, how does this work?
Do you have to, uh, ask that the, uh, ask, so as a, as the, uh, person who voted against it, you'll have to reintroduce the motion, you wanna, you wanna reverse and then go back to the?
So, she would need to say that she wanted to.
Uphold.
Up, so she would make a motion to uphold or reverse the one.
Reverse her no decision and uphold the, uh, city minister.
So, that's the motion.
Right, that would be the motion, she wants to make it.
Okay. That would be the motion.
I am sorry. But I have to do what is in the best interest of the majority of the people that live in Corvale. I am deeply sorry. But I vote to uphold. I, I vote to affirm the recommendation of the city administrator.
So, you're making a motion to reverse your initial vote and make a motion to.
Put the vote back on the table again.
Okay, okay, okay. All right, so that, is that your official motion?
Yes.
Okay. Moved by Nguyen, could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vogel Zhang, okay. And we do the voice vote again, correct?
Yeah, the roll call.
Roll call vote, please.
Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
Nguyen?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Okay.
Ananmas.
All right. Motion is, the motion passes and.
So, what happens now is we'll, I'll issue the written ruling, have the mayor sign it. They have the option to appeal to district court, your decision.
So, there's another option to appeal?
Correct.
Um, I just wanna say, I know this was messy, I know this was hard, and I think it just speaks to the fact that this is a really, really painful situation. And we all have a lot of, it's just a lot, it's a lot that goes into it. So, I, again, I'm really sorry about all of the pain, all of the trauma, all of the, this is just really, really bad all the way around. And I appreciate everybody being here tonight and sharing your stories, so, thank you, okay.
Hey, you know what, sir? Whatever, okay, just go.
What's the timeframe of the appeal?
Uh, I wish the written ruling, you have five, five days to appeal to district court.
All right. Okay, let's take, uh, just a little breath, give the room a minute to clear out.
Thank you for your time, guys.
We need to, I appreciate that, we need to continue, please, thank you, okay. All right. So, I'll take a deep breath. And we will move on to our next agenda item. So, our next agenda item is a, for our golf cart GPS system. This would be to approve a lease agreement with Yamaha for a new system for golf carts at the Brown Deer Golf Course. We have a public hearing on this item. I will open the public hearing. Oh, no, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, no. Open the public hearing, is there anyone that would like to speak to us on this? Okay, we have our Parks and Rec Director, Sherry Proud, do you have any information you wanna share?
Just beyond, um, just sharing the memo for the, the public on this, this is a new GPS system that comes with the new golf carts. Um, it is the ability to control those golf carts, um, being able to shut them off, being able to send messages, being able to, um, put governors on them for speed, geofence where they can go, um, and just, um, uh, some other features that are, that is very nice, um, on those carts. I did make a mistake, I was working on, I think, too many Brown Deer things at once. And, um, the cost of this, um, particular lease per year is twenty seven thousand, which breaks down to four hundred and fifty dollars per cart per year. And, um, this is included, um, in the budget to increase the golf cart fees a dollar to be able to help pay for that.
Okay, thank you for that overview. Do we have any written comments, Thor? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and we will consider the resolution.
Resolution approving a lease agreement with Yamaha Motor Corporation for a new GPS system for golf carts at the Brown Deer Golf Course. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Nguyen, any questions?
Comment, since I've been using these carts.
Yes.
Um, it would be nice to know where they get turned off a little bit more clearly on the course.
Okay, well, there shouldn't, if you're on the course, they shouldn't be turned off at all?
No, if you get too close to the green, but you're not sure how close you, you have to be. I feel like I'm forty yards from the green and all of a sudden it shuts off and I have to reverse.
Okay, well, uh, I'll tell the staff that they have some indications about that.
Where the boundaries are would be helpful down the road.
Everybody tried to do wheelies on the other?
They are nice carts, though.
They are nice.
How many carts do we have?
There's sixty in the lease.
Thank you, sixty.
Sixty, six zero.
Yeah, thank you.
GPS is a little too restrictive, isn't it?
What's that?
A little too restrictive. No, it's very good, good job, Sherry, thank you.
Awesome, any other questions or comments?
I just know that the, um, Brown Deer Golf Club has continued to be one of the premier golf courses in the area, and I just thank you for all the care that you've given it and how you've kept throughout the years, kept it up, thanks.
Staff did a really nice job out there. All right, are we ready to vote? Can I get the roll call?
Councilmember Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
Nguyen?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Uh, what was this, a resolution? Resolution is approved, all ayes. Okay, on to the next agenda item. Number nine, uh, compact track loader skid steer lease. This is a public hearing for this item. And this is a piece of equipment that will be used by the forestry program for tinder, timber stand improvement work and to keep invasives under control in Corleville Woodlands. It will also be used to maintain flood berms, stormwater bio cells, the Clear Creek Stream mitigation project, along with snow removal operations and other project work. All right, I'll open the public hearing on this. Don't think we have anyone that would like to speak to us on this, Sherry, do you have any comments?
No, you explained, um, what it's for, this is a piece of equipment that's really gonna increase some of our safety issues that we've had with mowing some of those flood berms, so we're excited about that. We'll be able to reach into some of the, the new stormwater bio cells, particularly like at Auburn Ridge subdivision where we have, um, several new stormwater bio cells there with that subdivision as, and along Coral Ridge Avenue. And, uh, we have been, um, planning for this piece of equipment, um, for a couple of years now, and we've decreased money in the FY twenty-five budget in the contracts, contracted areas, and also in some of those rental fees, and should be able to do a little bit more of that in FY twenty-six. So, um, that lease payment of two thousand fifty-five dollars and twenty-four cents a month should be offset somewhat through, um, those operating budgets, as well as we've spread this over three different operating budgets.
Okay, excellent. Thor, do we have any written comments?
No, Richard.
Okay, close the public hearing and I will consider the resolution.
Resolution approving a lease for a compact truck loader and skid steer with mulching head for the Parks Department, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Nguyen, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any final questions or discussion on this item? Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
Nguyen?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, Corleville West, Part Four, Lot One. This proposal is for a forty-three hundred square foot dental building with thirty-nine parking stalls to be constructed on the northwest corner of Merchant Street and Jones Boulevard. Could I have the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number twenty-two-four dash one thousand eight and ordinance amending the Corleville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number twenty-twenty dash one thousand nine, as previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits to the city of Corleville Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Corleville West, Part Four, Lot One, from C-two Arterial Commercial District to CPUD-two Commercial Plan Unit Development Two District, introduced for adoption, second consideration by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Vogel Zhang. Any questions or comments on this? All right, can I get a roll call?
Councilmember Knutson?
Aye.
Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
Nguyen?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Ordinance passes its second consideration, all ayes. Next item, Altmeier Acres Subdivision. This resolution accepts the public improvements for Altmeier Acres Subdivision and releases the subdivision from lien for those public improvements. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution accepting public improvements constructed in Altmeier Acres Subdivision, Corleville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Nguyen, any questions, comments, or discussion?
When's that building open up?
It will open, I think, towards the end of the year, right, Pacifico?
This year already?
Or, or towards the end of?
Um, it'll be beginning of, uh, two thousand twenty-five, January.
Next year.
Couple more, yeah, that's over the year.
It's going up quick, it looks like.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
Nguyen?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, urban renewal ordinance amendment. This ordinance will add Lot One, Altmeier Acres Subdivision in order to capture the base amount value in addition to Lot One, Royal Yas and Diva subdivisions, and Lot Two, Jacobs Clear Creek Third Subdivision. And these readings are condensed in order to meet the filing deadline at the end of the month. So, let's start with the first ordinance.
Ordinance number twenty-two-four dash one thousand nine and ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-two-four dash one thousand seven regarding adding additional property in the Mall Highway Six Urban Renewal Area to collect incremental property taxes, introduced for adoption, first consideration by Councilmember Vogel Zhang, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Any questions or comments on this first ordinance?
I'm saving my questions for the third consideration.
Okay, well, I'll wait till, I'll, I'll just give you a brief, uh, this should have been included, I, when I looked at the, uh, there's a partial assessment on this for twenty twenty-four. So, in order to capture the entire twenty years for the entire, uh, value, incremental value, I needed to add that to last week's or, the ordinance that we had. I was, thought I was gonna add it to next year's ordinance, but that wouldn't have done us any good, so. This was, this should have been in the other ordinance, it was my fault for not getting it in there. And, but, so we need to get these done here, uh, and into the auditor shortly. So, that's why there's three readings, I would normally not do that, but I, this is what, uh, my recommendation is, just to get it in. So, we'll get both ordinances in, make sure they're in before December first.
We don't wanna lose any tip dollars, Kevin.
Yeah, the, uh, the, the base value is seventy-four thousand, the, the partials right now is five point nine million, and then it'll be, the minimum assessment agreement on this building is fifteen million. So.
That's a chunk of change.
Yes.
Well, we have time in there.
Okay, any other questions? All right, can I get the roll call?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes. And for the next item, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules to adopt the second and third readings of the ordinance, could I get that motion?
So moved.
Moved by Vogel Zhang, can I get a second?
Second.
By Knutson, do we do a voice vote?
Nope, roll call on this one.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
Nguyen?
Aye.
Nguyen, sorry.
Motion carries, all ayes. Okay, next one, could I have that ordinance read, please?
Ordinance number twenty-two-four dash one thousand nine and ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-two-four dash one oh seven regarding an additional property to the Mall Highway Six Urban Renewal Area to collect incremental property taxes, introduced for adoption, second consideration by Councilmember Nguyen, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or discussion on this? All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
Nguyen?
Aye.
Ordinance passes its second consideration, all ayes. And finally, could I have the last ordinance, please?
Ordinance number twenty-two-four dash one thousand seven regarding adding an additional property in the Mall and Highway Six Urban Renewal Area to collect incremental property taxes, introduced for adoption, third and final consideration by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Nguyen. Did you get your questions answered, Mike, already?
I did.
Okay, great, any other questions? Okay, could I have the roll call?
Councilmember Knutson?
Aye.
Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
Nguyen?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Ordinance passes its third and final consideration, all ayes. Okay, next item. Amendment number eighteen, Mall and Highway Six Urban Renewal Plan. This amendment, number eighteen, for the mixed-use project referred to as Gather Iowa, will, uh, will allow for these rebates of tax, in, tax, I'm sorry, incremental tax revenues to the developer, and the public hearing will be December tenth, twenty twenty-four, and the consultation will be held on Monday, December second, twenty twenty-four. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution setting a date for consult, consultation and a date for a public hearing on the proposed amendment number eighteen to the urban renewal plan for the Mall and Highway Six Urban Renewal Area is introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Nguyen. Any questions on this? One thing I just did want to note, uh, since this is the Gather Iowa, it, it, just to clarify for folks, we still will, will, you know, we're, we're talking about, uh, uh, I'm sorry, we're talking about some incentives. And so, we had talked about how we wanted to make sure that there was affordable housing included in this development, that'll come later, right? This is just setting up so we can hammer out the details of that.
That would be coming as part of the development agreement.
Right.
And there'll be three phases in the development agreement, three different parcels, the large building, the second building, and then a, um, hotel. Um, and we're working on trying to figure out the details of how, um, we're still working on the affordable housing portion, that building, as to who and how, and it makes the most sense to get that built. Everybody's in agreement, it should be built and will be built, it's just who does it is the question.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that was clarified and that, that people, you know, 'cause that was something, that was a big point of discussion, and when we started talking about this, what, two years ago? So, I, I just.
Probably longer than that.
Yeah, longer, yeah, it probably has been longer than that. But I just wanted to, to note that, that that, that is still very much a part of this, and, and we will hammer out those details down the road. Uh, do we have any other questions or discussion on this?
I'll just say kudos to staff for keep, keeping, working on this, I, um, did.
I'll just say kudos to staff for keep, keeping, working on this. I, um, did hit the recycling center last weekend, and, and it's reminded me, if this goes through, like I hope it does, we'll lose that building, which, uh, we don't have an alternative to. We certainly don't want to go back to where we were over by the transportation center with that temporary facility, so encourage, um, staff to start thinking about that, if this is going to happen.
Yes, we will have to find a solution to that. That will be the third phase, so, you know, we will have.
Oh, we'll have it for a little while.
A little while to figure it all out.
That's good to know.
I do think the concept of how that's been designed has worked really well. And so, I think we would want to consider that as we design a new one.
Yep.
All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, could I get the roll call?
Customer Vogelzang.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, we have our annual urban renewal report, and the city council is required to formally approve by motion the filing of an annual urban renewal report with the Iowa Department of Management. So, we have Ann Hester here, our, uh, finance director, with some information. Are you going to talk about this a little bit? Okay, great.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you. So, urban renewal report is required, is prepared by the cities and local governments, and it summarizes finances, projects, and debt obligations for urban renewal area. It's required by the state. Just a second. Oh, goodness. I know, but I. So this. No, but I, I need, oh, yeah, oh, okay, okay. Now. I'm locked out. Well, it's good to have the printout.
Yeah, let's just, we can just use the printout, we can just use the printout, let's just work on the printout. Would there be a way, I, all of this is in the packet already, so the public's able to see it. So, let's just go off of the printout, so we're, we, we can keep things moving along.
The city has three TIF areas, and, um, uh, this is the high-level summary of, you know, the, of three TIF areas. So, the way this, I put the comparison between fiscal year, uh, twenty-one, fiscal year twenty-three. Each TIF area would have a beginning cash balance, uh, TIF revenue section, and of course, expenses, and ending cash balance. Uh, TIF revenue has multiple sources, some of it is Johnson County's tax property dollars diverted to TIF areas. And, uh, you can see that, uh, that particular TIF revenue stayed relatively the same compared to prior year. Uh, the largest, uh, the biggest change is miscellaneous revenue, uh, and that has to do with item fifteen on the agenda. Uh, it has to do with, uh, reserve funds transfer that, uh, the city staff is looking, uh, to get the council to approve. And, uh, I have the notes to the site that outlines the amounts for each TIF area. Uh, so the reason why, um, well, the city staff decided it's in the best interest to request the reserve funds transfer, uh, we have a city policy, that city policy outlines the minimum required fund balance in various funds. Uh, the same city policy has the provision about, um, uh, that bond issues that to be paid from alternative revenues, including the TIF revenue, uh, shall have, uh, a one-year principal and interest reserve established at the time of the bond issue. Uh, the city has established those reserves, uh, those reserves, uh, were mainly placed in Fund Two Hundred Debt Service Fund. And, uh, legally, those reserves are restricted for accounting purposes. And during the most recent, uh, bond issue, it was noted by the city staff and the consultants that the rating agency did not provide the benefit of us having those funds, uh, due to the fact that those funds are restricted. Uh, after consulting with, uh, financial and legal outside advisors, the city staff decided that, um, it would make sense to move those reserve funds into specific, uh, funds from which bonds are paid. Those would be a mall TIF, Oakdale TIF, Twelfth Avenue TIF. Uh, that would accomplish two, uh, I guess, there would be two goals. First of all, uh, the fund, uh, it will increase the fan, uh, the fund balance in those areas, and also will, would allow the rating agencies to see, uh, the cash for its intended purpose, to be able to repay the debt. Uh, this would also be similar to how the city handles the hotel fund at this time, its Fund Six Seventy. Uh, at this time, the reserve, uh, balance, the reserve, uh, fund is, um, being kept, uh, under the hotel, and it reflects, and that particular cash balance ref- reflects that reserve balance. Um, additionally, the city seeks to revise the IRL transfer that was approved back in June to allow the cash movement for, to the hotel fund to, specifically for the payment of principal and interest of hotel bond issue. Then, on the printout, I outlined, uh, the notable projects, uh, Twelfth Avenue, it's a fifth street improvement that was financed with general obligation bonds, uh, two thousand twenty-four issued this spring. Oakdale, uh, uh, TIF, we have fill house, uh, fill house purchase early in fiscal year, uh, and also Oakdale Boulevard Extension Project, and mall TIF, we have IRL park, uh, park fee and staybridge rebates.
Okay, thank you. All right, and so, just to clarify, the, you, you, you were, you were giving some really good detail about the, the fund transfer. So that, that's great context for the, the next item.
That's the next.
Yes.
So, so I was going with that, so what we see here, the reason why we have, we have the large, uh, change year to year for miscellaneous revenue has to do with those fund transfers.
Okay, excellent.
Um, then, we have the expenditure section, so expenditure would include rebate expenditures, and also non-rebate expenditures would be, uh, the principal and interest payments on bond issues. And the variances in those areas would have to do with timing, um, you know, just with the timing of the payment schedule for those bond issues. Uh, and then we have the ending balance. So, overall, all three TIF areas, uh, do, you know, have improvement in the cash balance at the end with this proposed reserve fund transfer, um. It's really, the entire report, the entire urban renewal report is a summary of, uh, I guess, of the finances and the projects and the debt issues.
Thank you. I really like this condensed version a lot. It, it's, I, I like it, I mean, the, the original, no.
Went on and on.
Yes, yes, and so I, I really love how you have really condensed it and, and gotten it in this form. It's actually, oh, very helpful.
Thank you.
Yeah. Mike, do you have questions?
Just me?
Yes, well, I assumed you would. I'm sure others do as well, but let's start with you.
No, thank you for, for summarizing that. Um, this might be the next agenda item, but since we're on this, I, I, I see we're moving money to the Oakdale TIF from that two hundred fund, which is doing quite well. I, I, I guess I don't understand why we have to move money in there.
So, what, what we're doing, we're moving money to the specific fund, uh, from which a bond issue is being paid. So, the, so what, we're moving reserves, and those reserves are specific to the Oakdale TIF. That's why they're getting moved to that area.
Okay.
Other questions from folks? Any other thoughts on the urban renewal report? Okay. I would entertain a motion approving and accepting the annual urban renewal por- renewal report for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four.
So move.
Moved by Winn, seconded by Knutson.
Voice vote's fine.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, motion is approved. Excellent. Okay, now, on to the next item, transfer of funds, and I think we had a pretty great overview of that. Uh, could I have the resolution read, please?
Resolution authorizing the transfer of funds introduced for adoption by council member Vogelzang, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any other discussion or questions or thoughts?
Uh, your letter in, uh, packet was very helpful.
Yes, it was.
Also, yeah, thank you.
Really helpful.
Understand.
I think you said something about required balances for these TIF funds. What, what are those exactly?
Uh, so, the reserve funds could be required by the city resolution, or could be required by the bond issue. So, we have a mixture of both. That means, at the time of the bond issue, uh, it's part of the legal document. We're supposed to have that balance established, that reserve established, that makes it restricted. But the way the city views it, we look at it as cash, uh, that's available for the debt payment. And, uh, you know, at the time, you know, the most recent bond issues, it just appeared, the rating agency didn't see it that way, when it was in Fund Two Hundred.
And this, the reserves are part of our financial policy, correct?
That's correct, for, yeah.
Yeah, so that is a policy that we have, and that was, again, a, a policy that we created for the benefit of the rating agency.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. And so, what you're saying is that those were unrestricted?
Uh, those are restricted.
I'm sorry, I meant to say, I'm, I apologize, I'm a little.
One of those nights.
Little frightened, but these were restricted funds, and the rating agency wanted, wanted them to go towards, wanted to be clear about what they were for, essentially.
It just, it, it appeared to us that them being in Fund Two Hundred, which is separate from those, you know, TIF areas, uh, you know, they were not being looked at as related to the TIF areas. However, they're being paid from the TIF areas. Uh, so, the decision, we, it appeared to us, it would make more sense for the rating agency to see them as part of the TIF balance if they're being moved, if they're getting moved to TIF area.
And they are still restricted.
They're still restricted, nothing will change that.
They're still restricted, even though we're, we're just moving where they, where they go. We're kind of lining them up with, with where they.
Being paid from.
Yes, yes.
It's just another step to try to make it very clear, um, what the policies were, and, um, how, um, we address it in our books.
Is the two hundred fund the mall?
The two hundred fall, uh, fund is the debt service, overall debt service.
Overall debt service.
And that has various, uh, strict restrictions.
But what, what funds it? How do we get money into that?
Um, well, you could get it through property tax, or you can transfer dollars into that. So, there's the debt service levy, right? So that's an annual contribution to that, but then, there's also.
I mean, we're taking our portion of the, of the taxes from the mall and putting it into, I thought, debt service, basically.
Um, you decide that during the budgets period, but yes, the.
That's what we've been doing year after year.
Yes, yes, it is.
But, so that doesn't necessarily go into the two hundred fund?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, could I have a roll call, please?
Customer Winn.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, we have the Coral Ridge Mall Welcome Center sponsorship agreement. The amendment is to reflect a payment of sixty thousand dollars to be paid on or before February first, twenty-twenty-fifth, and to extend the term of the agreement through January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution approving an amendment to the sponsorship agreement with the Iowa Children's Museum regarding the operation of the Welcome Center at Coral Ridge Mall, introduced for adoption by council member Winn, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or discussion?
I'm grateful that they will take this on again, they do a great job, I think.
Yeah, awesome. All right, could I have the roll call?
Customer Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, we have the Governor's Traffic Safety Contract. And the FY twenty-twenty-five Highway Safety Grant will cover the cost of several driver safety programs and equipment. Could I have that resolution, please?
Resolution approving an agreement with the Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau for Traffic Services, introduced for adoption by council member Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Winn. Any questions? Okay, roll call.
Customer Knutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
So move.
Moved by Winn, could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Could I have the roll call?
Customer Vogelzang.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved, all ayes. City Administrator's Report.
Nothing at this time, mayor.
Okay. Mayor's Report, I do have a couple of quick things. First thing I want to say is related to the, the situation that we had here this evening. And I want to talk about, you know, we, we, we just had a, a terrible incident situation here related to dogs, pets, and, and safety in our community. And I'm going to give everybody a little bit of a crabby mom lecture tonight. Rich, I believe you met, asked a question about leash laws. And I just want to note that, as I have been out walking and running, I, I am out on the trails almost every day, so is my husband, and between the two of us, over about the last six weeks, between the two of us, we have seen at least ten dog owners with their dogs off-leash on our trails and on our city property. I think that folks think that the area off of Old Hospital Road is a, is a dog park, and I'm here to tell you that it is not a dog park. And if I seem a little bit strident about this, it's because of what we just went through tonight. And I have heard so many people make comments about how their dog is friendly, their dog is trained. Don't worry, my dog won't hurt you if it is off-leash. And I think what we witnessed here tonight shows that you bet, it's better to be safe than sorry. Kevin, what is the fine for having a dog off-leash in the city of Coralville?
Uh, the fine is a hundred and five dollars plus costs and surcharges. If you, if you get a ticket, it'll be around a hundred and eighty-five dollars.
So, you will get a ticket. You will get a ticket if you are caught. And I, again, just because of the awful situation we had here tonight, I would like to pursue some signage. I would like to have more reminders in the community that we do have leash laws. And I have a dog. I have a, an eighty-five-pound golden retriever, who, around my family, wouldn't hurt a fly. But that does not mean that we do not leash her when we take her on a walk, okay? So, please, leash your dogs. Not only for the safety of the people around you, but also for the safety of your dog. I've got a dog that is, uh, uh, you know, she's a, a field-bred golden retriever. Even on a leash, it is very difficult for me to, to restrain her. golden retriever. Even on a leash, it is very difficult for me to, to restrain her because she's, she's big, she likes to pull, she likes to chase things. And so, you know, I don't want to lose her when I'm walking her. We always leash her. I don't want anybody's dog getting hit by a car. I think about that all the time when I see people walking their do, dogs without their leash, especially in that area around Old Hospital Road. You know, if your dog bolts and there's, there's big trucks that go down that road, so I'm also looking out for the safety of other people's pets. So, you get the crabby mom lecture tonight, folks. Leash your dogs. I don't ever want to have a situation like this here again, okay? We're going to put signs up. I want that done, please. All right. Done with the crabby mom lecture. Other things I have, we have several openings on our boards and commissions, and there's almost too many for me to list. So, I would encourage everybody to go and take a look at our city's website, to look at all of those vacancies. Being on a board or a commission is a really wonderful way to start getting involved in the community. So, would highly encourage folks to check that out on the website. I believe the deadline for the application, did we land on December 13th?
Yes.
5:00 PM, that's a Friday. So, you've got plenty of time, and be sure that you, you go and check those out. And I would encourage folks to apply for those positions. Last thing that I want to note is that I will be gone at the next meeting. Will be on our family vacation, so I just want to say in advance to everyone, Happy Thanksgiving, and I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday. That's all I have. City Attorney's Report?
I have nothing additional.
Okay, excellent. Committee and council members report. Let's start down at this end with council member Goodrich.
Thank you. The Friends of the Library had another great book sale, the first Saturday, Friday and Saturday of November, and they raised $5,140. So, thanks to all of the people that volunteer, that make that happen, and all those who make donations for the books that are sold there. The Extreme Arena has had lots of activity, lots of fun. We hosted the state volleyball tournament for high school this last week, and I just can't say enough how great that facility is, and the parking and everything, and people came from all over the state and really enjoyed the time, thanks to all who were involved in to the State Athletic Girls High School Athletic Association that have chosen Coralville. We just really appreciate and enjoy working with them. So, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Council member, oh, Nguyen.
Nothing to know, Mayor.
Okay. Rich?
Nothing.
Mike?
Yeah, we, we're one week out from, from our election, and I just have to comment how grateful and thankful I am to the residents of Johnson County for supporting the sustainability amendment. This passed with 77% throughout the county. It's going to give $30 million for water quality, forest restoration and preservation, trails, which everybody knows I'm supportive of. And I looked at that and just hope we can work with the administrators of that money and accelerate the development of our 110-acre park, I don't even know if it has a name, in the West Land Use area, that we just approved the master plan that I think we're all excited about, and hopefully that this money can be used to, to maybe accelerate that. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Can I just follow up? I mean, I had, I had the privilege of, for the first time in my life, working the polls for the election. Thanks for reminding me. And it was, it was a phenomenal experience, and I look forward to the next, next time to do it again. Great experience, and I would encourage everybody to do.
Very cool.
I forgot one thing. I said it passed 77%. I looked at Coralville vote. It was over 80%.
That's amazing. Good job, Coralville. Awesome. Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded by Goodrich, seconded by Knutson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.